Good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and open tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Okay, it looks like all members are present except for a member's story who's off tonight.
Roberts.
Roberts. Ah, yeah. Sometimes my brain goes backwards. All right, we also have Superintendent Hopkins, Director of Finance Law. We have our student representatives, we have our newest addition, Erin Coleman, joining us from Pathways. And we also have Jay Smith over there from Middle School. Can I get a motion, or can I get motion and support to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, support.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Mr. Hopkins says no recognition or correspondence, so we can move ahead to board communication. And Tracy, would you like to start?
Well, I'd be happy.
Teresa?
Got back from vacation, which was wonderful. Went to the finance boot camp, which made me feel pretty good because I'm actually finally, after years and years and years of being on the board, understanding school finance a little bit better. So, um, yeah, it was really informative and that's all I got. I would have loved to go to the, some of the things that were happening, but I did unfortunately. So I was gone, all this, or home, all this, but I'm fine now, but.
Was there a decent turnout at the boot camp?
Um, I, didn't know, like, four, fifteen? That's, that generous, it's fifteen generous.
Yeah, that's about fifty.
Okay. But from different districts that I generally see there, so that's, that was good.
Okay. Cory?
Um, nothing from last meeting. I think this week we got a couple of things that I'm not attending, so the K, OKASP data and the depression is volunteering.
I would be.
Mark, anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, I don't have much. I've been volunteering a lot with the senior class and looking forward to the dinner on Wednesday. If there is anybody that wants to volunteer for the senior class, we still need raffle ticket sellers. So if anyone's just sitting home Friday night, wants something to do, let me know.
I would work in the fashion stand.
Yeah, oh, that's right, never mind, never mind, not a few people, any of you people up there.
I'll sell raffle tickets instead, if you don't want to get me in there.
Sorry, I forgot about that. That's the reason why I'm not, I'm not doing raffle tickets this week. Anyways, okay, that moves us onto our discussion and information items. And the first one is Department of Teaching and Learning.
All right, thank you for being here tonight. We have some things to share with you for all of our spring data. And you can go to the next slide. So this is our outline for our presentation. We have some highlights from our spring assessment as well as the challenges from that achievement data. We'll be looking at K eight NWEA and three eight of eleven MSEP as well, eight through twelve PSATs and SATs, and have a chance to talk about some of your notices and wonders. So this, all of these documents are in the board packet that you were able to look through and review prior to the meeting tonight. So if there are any questions again at the end, we'll have an opportunity to have some Q and A. Okay, we're going to start with our elementary, page five. You'll notice that this year we are only recording out on grades second through fifth grade. You can see the next slide. And that's because last year our kindergarten and first grade students took the I-Ready test. They were piloting that for both reading and in math. So we didn't have any historical data to compare it to. So we are going to start with some celebrations. We, again, have seen really, really great scores for NWEA for our math at Alpine Central and Zinzer. We have scores that are either at or above the projected RIT scores. And you can see in that second bullet, we have an average RIT score of at or above the, those grade level norms in nineteen of our twenty-seven both reading and math assessments, which is just a tiny bit higher than last year. The red dots, if you can see on the visuals on the right, that's, that is where those norms are, the grade level norms, and then the blue bands are how our students scored. So you can see second grades, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade either at or above the norms. And those are all for math.
Those norms are state?
No, the national norms. Yes. All right, a few more celebrations. Our second grade across the district that exceeded that RIT score norms for both reading and math. So that was the first time we've done that in a long time. And Zinzer exceeded the RIT score for reading and math in grades two through five. So their scores, as you can see, are all in the white. Those are, all of the red highlights indicate below the national norms. And so some of the challenges that we see still fall in the reading area for third grade reading. Two of our third, two of our three buildings are just below the national norm. So the national norm is one ninety-seven, and Alpine was at one ninety-five, and Central one ninety-six. So again, just below that, that, that national norm. And, and you can, we see that for grades three through five at Alpine and third grade at Central. So moving on to MSEP, fourth and fifth grade math students at Zinzer are above the state and ISD average. And this has been, this is the third year in a row that they have been at or above that, that average. And then we also, for the first time, have seen a sharp increase in the social studies assessment at Alpine and Central. And more information and the visuals are in the board packet if you would like to see those. We just captured a few screenshots to give you an example. The next one. So some of the challenges, you know, we, that we have been noticing, again, we've not seen significant changes in our data for both ELA and math in, for MSEP. And that proficient, percent proficient point is below that ISD average for fourteen of our eighteen assessments, and that's across ELA and math. And for third grade, it's four out of the six, fourth grade, five out of the six, and fifth grade, five out of the six as well.
What do you mean when you say four out of six and five out of six?
Good question. So, yeah, so there's an ELA and a math assessment for, and then for all three buildings, that would be six assessments.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So we were, we were below that ISD and state average for four out of the six assessments in third grade.
Okay, across math and what?
Across math and ELA.
Accounting for all people.
Yes, yeah. Good question. So some of our takeaways, we have, we really have some strong NWEA results, and, and again, we're, because we're moving away from NWEA and starting I-Ready this year, I did just learn that there is a way to crosswalk I-Ready and NWEA, so we can do some comparative, you know, data analysis once we have all of the data together. Our I-Ready rep is working on that for us.
Does crosswalking?
So we can compare, are the scores similar to NWEA? Since we won't have historical I-Ready data, we can't say are, you know, are we seeing growth or not? So we have to be able to try and compare apples to apples.
Since it translates, like a, a four and one is a six and the other?
Correct, yes. Yep. Um, we still see a disconnect between NWEA and MSEP results, where we're seeing some gains with NWEA. We're not seeing those same types of gains with MSEP. And, and then some of the highlights really that hopefully, you know, that we're hopeful for in the future, we have made that shift in curriculum resources for ELA. We have teachers in K five that are finishing up or have already finished letters training, and we've also adopted UFLY, which is a really systematic phonics instruction resource that did make the statewide list. And this will be the first year that our K through three teachers are utilizing that with Bookworms. And they're, they have a scope and sequence that they'll be following for, for all four grade levels. And then this is year six with Bridges Math, and we continue to see steady growth in the NWEA data for math.
Liz, can you highlight the comment about the knowledge building curriculum and as possible correlation with science and social studies?
Yeah, so Bookworms is a knowledge building curriculum, so that means that they have a lot of science and social studies topics embedded within, within their lessons. And we're really hoping that we'll see that translate into, into higher MSEP scores because kids are going to come, when you, you know, when you have a larger base of knowledge around science and social studies topics, you can apply it during that assessment time. This is the end of the elementary portion. Do you have any questions for me before we move on to middle school and high school data?
So I will just start with saying thank you. This is a really nice breakdown. It makes it pretty easy to follow. But I guess my question is, now that we have this, and we know what the takeaways are, what's the next step in addressing these issues?
Yeah, that's a great question. So some of the things I highlighted, one, the curriculum resource switch. You know, curriculum resources, I would call it, is like, it's the lowest level of okay. We have a really great resource to start with, and what we're going to do with that is work on, work with teachers tomorrow. For example, we have a full day of PD where we have a Bookworms coach coming in to talk about instructional practices. So those are those instructional moves that teachers bring to a curriculum that takes something from like good to great. And we have those experiences embedded within the school year, so every month, teachers have the opportunity to work together to learn more about how they can use these resources to push student, you know, student learning, and, and time to reflect on, on those student, those instructional practices together. So I'd say that's, that's one of them. We also are starting walkthroughs with principals. So on Friday, I'll be working with the three elementary principals and instructional coaches, and we're going to use a tool that is provided by Bookworms, and we're going to go into a classroom at every grade level, and principals will use the tool to be able, for them, to learn a little bit more about the components of Bookworms. So when they're observing, they can provide feedback for teachers, and, and it'll give a chance for the coaches and the principals to work together. So they all, we have kind of a common look fours when we're, when we're in classrooms, and a common language to share with teachers when we're providing feedback. This tool is also something that teachers can use to self-reflect. So as they're looking back on their lessons, they can identify which areas they feel really strong with and which areas we may need some more professional learning around. We're doing that with math as well. We had walkthroughs last week, Wednesday, at all three of the buildings, where we had a team that went into variety of classrooms, and we were able to collect the data around the type of questioning that teachers are using with students, which helped us identify that, that we are really strong at asking questions for clarity and for gathering information. And then there's some other types of questioning that really kind of prompts deeper thinking that we might need to do some more learning around. So it gave us a lot of data of like, what are we really good at, and what are our next steps for some, some professional learning that Nick Vanderheide will be providing in, hopefully, in November. So we'll, we'll do the math, math walkthroughs three times this year, and we're really hoping that, one, it gives us a lot of information, and also that teachers are more comfortable with us coming into classrooms and, and having those conversations without instruction, so not just a resource, but the instructional moves in classrooms.
Will we have any results prior to the next testing to know if this is, if we're getting traction, if it's helping?
I guess it depends on what you would define as like results. Like if we're talking about student data, we, this, all of the grade levels do monthly PLCs. They do one with ELA, one with math, where they have formative, formative assessment data that they meet on. It's, it's a little more difficult to share, like we are sharing with, with this kind of more high stakes data. And so that, that might be hard to share out in a presentation, but could share out, you know, just in, in conversation. Or I would encourage you guys to go and actually be part of a PLC in the buildings, and, because that's where they're looking at, you know, how did Bill do this week on this skill, and is he ready for the next step or not, and what do I need to do differently as a teacher?
I guess where I'm going is not necessarily for us, but if you have leading indicators so that you can see if it's going in the right direction, if you need to pivot.
That's where the walkthroughs being in classrooms really makes, makes a big difference. So I, I think building principals and coaches have spent more time in classrooms this fall than they probably have in a long time. And part of it is just like learning this new curriculum, and, you know, they're, they're, they are able to be that instructional leader in a building when they're in classrooms. So I think those are, those will, will all be indicators of like whether this is, you know, whether, you know, we've, we've made any steps forward or not. And I think each week, you know, I'm getting a lot of feedback from teachers around their comfortability around Bookworms. We have ways for them to, to document things that are going well, questions they have. We hook up parking lot that they can pop questions into that I was able to share with the facilitator that's coming tomorrow, which is coming virtually. And so I think there's just a lot of feedback loops that we have that will give us an idea of whether we're on the right track or not.
Liz, those math walkthroughs are an extension of efforts from last year, correct?
Correct, yes.
Are they mature in our thought process and our capacity to do that?
Yeah, so we started those last year, and we've refined the tool. So when we're going into classrooms, if, you know, there's ten of us going into classrooms to observe, we're all looking for similar things, and we're, you know, we have a common understanding of when we talk about different types of questions, what do those, what do those look like and sound like, and what are we hoping, you know, what are we hoping to gather? So we're refining it each time and, and getting better information out of it.
I have one last one.
Yes.
I'm excited about the walkthroughs. I think supporting our teachers is just huge. Are, in your opinion, not to the two on the spot, but do you feel that we're adequately staffed as far as interventionists and instructional coaches for this to be effective?
So in my opinion, I think we have, we, for ELA, we have the resources for intervention. We actually, Sharon and I just looked at some data around like how many students are being serviced and what percentile, like so when they took the I-Ready and the Acadians assessment, what percentile are we hitting? So I feel with reading, I think we're doing, we're doing a nice job. We're, we're also going to be able to, we're hiring another person with the grant that we just received, so we'll be hiring another person that will be able to expand the work that Lindsay Jones has been doing at kindergarten into first grade, which will be more kids are getting that, those early interventions. And as, I don't know if you guys are aware, but we currently don't have math intervention this year. With those ESR funds discontinuing, we just weren't able to do both. And for instructional coaching, you know, there, there was a reduction at Alpine, so Janice Hoover is a point four, and the other two buildings are full time. The other two buildings have more teachers, but still at a point four, it's, it's, it's hard for her to be as present in classrooms. She's dividing her, her job between intervention and coaching.
So there's an opportunity.
There's an opportunity for.
Staffing, find ourselves in a position.
Where we find lots of money, yes.
I know, the magic pot, right?
Yes, yes.
Just saying.
Yes, I mean, there's, having, having more access to coaching intervention is always, you know, obviously always a great thing, but we only have, you know, so many dollars to, to make it all happen.
If I could, I think that's one of the, I'm hopeful and optimistic that, you know, it's not a silver bullet, there isn't anything that's a silver bullet in education, but the board's approval of going to I-Ready along with the supports that go along with it, I never get the title of my path.
Oh, my path, yes.
My path, I got it.
You got it.
I got it, my path. You know, so half per student's test, that they're giving, each student is given a personalized learning path that supports their, you know, their growth and having identified where their gaps are. So while we don't have math interventionists like we've had in the past, we, we have bypass that we haven't had in the past. So it won't replace, I'm confident in saying it won't replace, but it's not, but we do have a tool that we didn't have in the past. It'll be interesting to measure its connection.
What's, what's one few eyes on that data in those, that progression, both elementary and middle school?
Yeah, there's, they have nice tools for tracking like how many minutes and the percent passage that students have to complete in a week to, to show that there's evidence that it'll help them move forward in their learning. So they have to spend at least thirty minutes a week on, on those intervention lessons with a seventy percent or higher passing rate. And the I-Ready research, you know, shows that, that that's going to help them not just meet their, their student goal, but what they call a stretch goal. So if we want to close gaps, we can't just, you know, for kids that are a year or two or more behind, just one year of instruction is never going to catch them up. So we need them to be reaching those stretch goals year after year to close those gaps. And, and using that tool with fidelity, which I hate using that word, but they define fidelity as, as the thirty minutes or greater on the lessons with a seventy percent higher pass rate. And that, that will hopefully start closing the gap for both ELA and math.
As we continue on to middle school, the positive news relative to math performance continues. Look at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we're all across all three grades. The fall to spring average projected growth was exceeded for all three grades. We also had an increase in our average RIT score in each of those three grades for math and at eighth grade for our reading scores. Go to the next slide. Some challenges relative to that interim or benchmark assessment measurement. The fall to spring projected growth for reading was not met at both sixth and seventh grade. We hit it at eighth grade, that projected growth, we didn't exceed it, speaking to that kind of stretch goal mentality that Liz just shared. We also have our average RIT score for all six of those measures below the grade level norms. A quick note there, the gaps did close for four of those six assessments, and we saw significant growth in the math, but it is still below that, that fifty percentile of that national norm. Go to the next slide, Sharon. Some celebrations relative to both MSEP and PSAT. An increase in the percent proficiency for students taking the PSAT eighth grade English Language Arts test. That's a trend that we have, a trend, trends through the war. We've got that going for us two years now, at this point. An increase in the percent proficiency for sixth and eighth grade math and ELA with a significant growth in sixth grade math. Again, more positive news for mathematics. And a significant growth in percent proficient for eighth grade social studies. It's the highest level of percent proficiency since the fifteen, sixteen year.
What does that reference to page twenty-four in that first bullet?
Say again?
That first bullet references page twenty-four.
Yes, twenty-four in this first document that is kind of the primary source for all these images. So page twenty-four is where this image on the slide came from.
So if we go in that other folder that has everything?
Yes, ma'am.
The first?
Yep, we'll try to provide some tracers for you to go back to those tables and, good question, thank you. Go to the next slide. Some challenges relative to MSEP and PSAT at the middle school. We saw a drop in our seventh grade percent proficiency for both ELA and math. You can kind of see that dip at seventh grade compared to sixth and eighth grade performance. And then it says, while other sixth and eighth grade MSEP and PSAT percent proficiencies increased, all but the eighth grade ELA will be behind the ISD average. We, we aspire to be above and well beyond the ISD average, but in most areas we are not. We go to the next slide here. Some takeaways for middle school, that math stuff, and our middle school in particular. We, our teachers are on fire with their use of some thought processes and some, some instructional practices related to thinking in classrooms. I'm going to try to get it right. They call it non-permanent vertical surfaces, basically whiteboards where students are writing out their thinking and then explaining to peers, "Wait, I'm not quite sure you're on that. I did it this way." And both students wind up learning from each other that even, both ways are, are perfectly appropriate to, to solve a problem. For second bullet, ELA results in the urgent science of reading guidance for secondary, this is true of all middle school and high school. We finished last school year with a pilot of curriculum materials, both middle school and high school departments weren't quite comfortable with what they saw. They asked for time for another pilot. Both groups are finishing up a pilot of a different set of materials to start the school year. But that science of reading, we got, Liz and I have got some plans to bring, not letters training, but more of a condensed secondary appropriate science of reading professional development series to our English Language Arts and our intervention teachers at the middle school in particular, kind of try that out. It's not the full scope of the hours and modules that our elementary teachers have completed, but it is kind of right sized for our secondary staff.
It is put out by the, it's, Lexia puts out the same content, just as Bill said, it's a much shortened condensed course. Most middle school teachers don't need to know how to teach phonetic awareness and phonics, especially at, you know, you know, like a CVC word level. So they do have some of that foundational skills work built in, but it's more geared towards what secondary students, which people are being exposed to.
And the elementary product's name is called Letters, the middle school product's name, middle school high school's product name is called Aspire. So if you hear us refer to Aspire, that's what we're speaking to.
Can you share the pilot timeline with us? I know we talked about that in the test, so we know what's coming.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll, Superintendent Hopkins, for the bigger updates.
Sure.
And then our eighth grade social studies growth track, if, if you look at the graphic, there's a nice upward trend with that, but it also was tracking with the ISD mistake. So it's really too early to tell if that's an assessment based improvement or things that we're doing here locally. So we do have our first year under the belt for our TCI curriculum materials, but it's really probably too early to determine if there's a correlation of that. Any questions in middle school? As we shift into high school, thank you, Sharon. Some celebrations relative to PSAT and SAT. A small increase in our percent proficiency over the prior year, still tracking below, you know, years before COVID, or coming directly out of COVID. But there is a small increase there for both the total SAT score and our mathematics in particular, the PSAT, ELA, and PSAT tenth grade math scores. And then you can also see some improvement relative to. Um, and then you can also see some, uh, improvement relative to, uh, the pathways for, um, SAT LA, ELA, and the eleventh grade science and social studies assessments. Go to the next slide, um, challenges here at the high school relative to our SAT, ELA, and math scores. We continue to fall below the ISD and state average. Um, the PSAT nine and ten scores again are below the ISD average on both measures. Um, and pathways scores are far below the ISD average. In the report that, um, is that primary document, um, these pages are identified. It's, it has the high school scores, it has the combined, um, high school and pathway scores, and then there's a separate breakdown for pathway scores as well.
I might be reading this wrong, but I mean, you kind of start with elementary and go to middle school and you see some of the same theme, and then you get to the point of taking the PSAT and the SAT and you see kind of math continuing to be low and kind of reading, that kind of growth rate, as you get older, it's a different test, but it's the same result, right? And so now I have kids in high school taking PSAT and SAT and, you know, seeing that doesn't surprise me based on what I saw personally. So did we, my question, that's an observation, question was, I feel like, do we have or are we adding some sort of SAT prep course? Or where you actually prepare for the SAT as part of your curriculum?
That course vision was approved by the board.
That's what I thought, I remembered.
Our student enrollment was so low that we did not offer.
You'd find a way to promote that somehow, because again, now that I'm in this phase of life, like seeing the importance of that, right? And.
What I say in enrollment, I should, I, I better characterize that student needs.
Courses, but I, we actually don't know which ones ended up not being offered or did get offered. That's that, that, that one.
It's sad, and just speaking from having kids in that, just an awareness thing, right? How, like, you almost don't know how important that is, some of the, of, of high achievers clearly do, right? But kind of that, you know, high performer, but maybe not super focused on life after high school and below, don't necessarily realize how critical that is. And where kind of it's a barrier, like, you, you can have a four point, but you get, you know, eleven hundred on your SAT and all of a sudden you're not getting into the top universities, right? Four point class and all this, and your barrier is the SAT. Some kids just aren't great.
Test creators naturally.
Yes, sir. And from personal experience, the amount of free time to study for SAT, you know, they could prioritize it differently, so I don't mean that you make it too personal, right?
Right.
You know, I'm sure others can relate, that have had kids go through that. Again, it's important at all ages and I, again, this is kind of the, this is the outcome of what we've seen earlier on, I think, right? And so it kind of starts and builds, so you can prepare them earlier to get to this point where they're more ready. But I think if there's more intentional action, we can take two leading up to that test date and if they are interested, how do we get them interested? Right? Because I think that, like, my son, who always intended to go to college, right? Not to put him on camera, but what, you know, didn't necessarily prioritize SAT prep and all that and, you know, that can be a barrier to that, right? So.
And not only that, but like on the flip side, the people who are very highly engaged and want to do all of that, a lot of them think that they have to pay for it, which is really expensive. So external courses and things like that to be able to kind of show that we've got it built in would be great.
What'd you say, e-extra, pay more?
Like external, yeah, external, yeah.
Saturday boot camp.
Exactly, yeah, a lot of, I mean, there's, there's library, there's a million ways you could do it a lot more free, you know, like the different online tests and stuff through public libraries. Trust me, I know, I'm working it all into all of that stuff, but, um, I'm just thinking if somebody thinks that that is a detriment or a barrier. Being also.
Test optional is dissipated because of students not necessarily COVID students now.
Yeah.
So it's more important. Now, can you say that again?
Test optional is still kind of through this year, but it's gonna.
Well, firstly, you're doing away with that. Again, as I learn more, I mean, it's, it's barrier scholarships too, right?
Yes.
You get one tier for grade point, but if you find grade point with SAT, all of a sudden you're, you're way up and college is becoming more and more unaffordable. I know there's some tax rules and all that are changing or following rules, but, um, anyways, just some feedback, right? Again, just downtime feedback to someone that's in that kind of demographic at the moment.
Yeah, I'm in the same situation at home too, my oldest was COVID, so she didn't have to turn anything in and, uh, and my youngest is a junior and it's real this year.
Yeah, it becomes really, really real, real quick, and then you're, you know, everybody's scrambling, you're busy, you're like, okay, so what are you doing at school to kind of help you get ready for this, right? So I, I'm hoping we can find a way to get more interest, I don't think it's, I'm just like, we offer it, right? We're doing the right thing, but we have to somehow make students understand its importance, because I don't know what percent of our kids go to college, but I'd imagine it's about fifty percent or more, right? And it's relevant to that group, so if you have two hundred and fifteen kids in a class, it's relevant to over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve, right? So I think the other thing that may have contributed to the lack of interest is, and we're rectifying that this year, you'll notice, is that, um, our course proposals weren't, didn't come to the board until after we had already started the process of course selection and stuff like that, so. And even, even so, you know, students nowadays, they start their planning of what they're going to take in high school much earlier through their EDP process, and they kind of map those things out, and every time things change for them and it kind of, they have to make a decision on the spot of how important is changing their trajectory. I would say this is very important, but for them, maybe not so much, right?
That's true, honestly, I think that my, both of my kids knew what they were doing at the eighth grade. Meet, open house night of eighth grade when they came and learned, because they had their own pathway and they both did orchestral, so there you go, that's their, you know, that kind of thing. So, it's true.
Is there a possibility for it to be off hours? A prep, a prep course?
Yeah.
When you, what do you elaborate, what off hours meaning outside of school day?
Yes. Like a zero hour or something like that?
I think it's something that we could explore for sure, yeah.
Because that way you're not tapping into blowing away one of their electives, messing up the path. You might, uh, it, it might backfire, it might be people are like, if I can't do it during school day, I'm not going to do it. But you might have some people that say, well, you're gonna all give this to me and it's this thing that I can sign up for. It would be just interesting to see.
Yeah, I think looking at a few different options, that and, I mean, the curriculum, I'm curious to think about that, because and especially if that test optional going away, that changes a lot, right? But I do want to give kudos, and I don't know if this is the relevant group, like, again, having a senior now, like, all the prep and opportunities for the college application, applying for FASPA, just the whole calendar, like, is really impressive, so very much appreciate that, for whoever that's willing to do it.
Our high school team.
I appreciate.
I realized my comment about a Saturday boot camp dated me, I did that when I was your age before the internet was a thing, so I'm sure there's internet offerings today to achieve the same objective.
Yeah, there's lots, there's online, there's in person, there's, I mean, you can check out, you can buy a, a forty hour book.
Sure.
Good practice tests and all kinds, there's so many different ways, and it really depends on the kid, what's the best approach for them.
For sure. Um, we have one more slide here.
Can I go back and add a little bit of this, but we're able, do we know, like, what, do we have access to our students' SAT scores? Like, this kind of chart average versus this is the trend slice, right? Right or no?
We only know, do we only know the ones they take here? Because like, my kids took them multiple times.
Yeah.
We would.
Retake. No, there, I, as long as they're, my understanding, as long as they're still a high school student, when they retake them, they.
It gets reported to us.
I'd be curious to know how we compare just whatever the super score is, our average compared to kind of what you see in the district or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, like, because you can go back and look at, like, AP data and stuff, like, how many, like, I always find that interesting, like, how many out of that group that got four, I don't know about top school, but like, across the country, that's always good to know too. I, I guess my thought in that same vein was, you know, we're looking at the ISD, uh, uh, average and the state average, but like, are they at where they're supposed to be compared to like, you know, like, the tests that are nationally done or, you know, what I mean, across the board there?
This is based on percent proficiency, which is set at a.
So the state, that state number is the state proficiency, not the state average of across the state.
The proficiency, so this percent of students at the state is five point four for language arts, need to exceed the proficiency.
Yeah.
Minimum standard set by the state.
Okay, but I guess my thought is, we always want to be better than the state or better than the, just, you know, ISD. But like, where are we within the country, where is Michigan within the country, I guess? Forty.
Yeah, like forty.
Yeah, I think we're like in the bottom five in the.
And I, I don't want to go after this question comment, is, it would be interesting to see, like, if you take our average SAT scores against kind of state and country averages, but also what universities that gives them access to, right? So what is the average, you know, minimum SAT to get in this tier of school, to kind of see what our kids might qualify for, just to.
I just have to be careful with SAT because we require everyone to take it, and a large portion of them have no intent of ever going to college.
Out wires and things you could probably eliminate, but it's not going to be perfect. I'm just thinking a lot of like, you know, again, this is really the co, like, everything you set up to this point, SAT is the culmination of all that, right? It's the ultimate standardized test, and all of this other stuff is just the journey to get there, I would think.
Sure.
All perks, right?
Can you just add me on my, what, 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 I'm not following your train of what we would get by crunching those numbers?
To see what our SAT scores are?
Yeah.
Average, so I'm thinking you take all these standardized tests from whatever you start K or whatever, all the way up to your fourth grade, and we kind of show how they measure out, and then ultimately we take the SAT that gives you kind of a score, I mean, kind of the final standardized test, and see how that leads into how we compare to the state, country, and what schools that would be accessing.
I mean, yeah, because like, if you Google, if you Google average U of M score of accepted students, you'd see their scores, right?
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Whatever, like some crazy numbers.
To where, so I think that's why it was interesting to you in addition to those states.
Yeah, it's really interesting what they get in fourth grade. What I want to know is the journey, like, the end of the journey when it actually matters, when you take the test, like, all of that prep work, what does that make you eligible for?
When you walk to the high school cafeteria and you walk, you look at those class, when you see the different logos and school colors with the ranges of.
Because if you're telling me our average score is.
Oh, you guys have that, I thought that, yeah.
If you ever tell me your average score is a thousand and that makes you eligible for the bottom twenty-five percent of university, there's obviously a relationship problem, right? That's all I was going to say.
SAT, the SAT challenges, um, we've done this one already, we'll go to the next one. M-Step challenges, the eleventh grade M-Step for social studies and science are also below, um, the ISD and state average. We actually fell with the social studies a bit from last year, um, and as well as for our science that they love in grade, and that's taken eighth grade and, you know, for the love of grade. There's not as many test scores for science because they revamped it, didn't offer it, and of course with COVID, we got a delay, came out of starting work.
I'm stuck, stuck as a little tricky with eleventh grade because they are taking the SAT, they're taking, um, work keys, which now is going to be called the win. Um, so there, there are many assessments that they're taking, and this is one that they've seen since, um, third grade and probably not the one that they are, um, it, it essentially doesn't mean anything to students after eleventh grade. So where kids who, um, you know, are focused on going to college, the SAT is going to be the thing that, that schools are looking for, not M-Step.
Yeah, about you, just.
The other thing that, this is, we've talked about this in this setting before, you know, just keep in mind that these aren't cohorts. So we're not comparing the same group of students to, you know, from one year to the next. So it's almost, I think, better, maybe better is not forever, I, you know, when I look at it, I look at how are we comparing to ISD and state? Because it is that same group of students, and from one year to the next, did we make up ground? Because now we are similar group of students taking the same test as their peers, um, they're trying to look from one year to the next. We do that, we, everybody talks about that, but do remember it isn't, you know, it is a different room of students and.
Yeah, I think that kind of crossed my mind a lot when you saw such a big variance in, but it was not, like, the ISD and the state didn't go down, it was just like ours, and then the next time it went up, I think it was kind of on the reading or whatever. And, uh, we've middle school or whatever, and it was like, you know, that fourth grade class, I'm going back and going, well, they were in kindergarten in twenty twenty. You know what I mean, like, that, I'm sure it matters, but, like, yeah, so that's kind of what I thought as well. It's like those weird outlier years versus the continuation of missing. My, my question is, like, particularly through middle school, even though we didn't, you know, hit everything that we wanted to, I feel like this is numerically, but just qualitatively, you were telling us, since I've been on the board, like, year three, I guess, deals the most, like, the most positive, and especially in the middle school space of what you're reporting back to me, do the teachers there feel like they've made ground in what, how they're teaching and are those numbers for everything else? Because I know you said that you've gained ground, even if they didn't surpass, like, the gaps for closing and some of those.
Hey, don't think I think that would be accurate.
Yeah.
I think there's, especially as our middle school staff has, uh, come to understand the differences between iReady and N W A and the by path capacity, coupled with our, our team structure and interventions for identifying groups of small students. There's, there's, I've, I've been in some staff meetings in middle school where, um, teachers have highlighted some, some, you know, energy and appreciation for what they've been able to do with smaller groups of kids and go for things that you get this year or since the beginning of school. Um, we have one more slide, sir. Uh, some takeaways here from M-Step, that first bullet, um, the, the high school improvement team and, uh, Mr. Robrod, uh, really kind of got back to they, their desires to focus on common research-based elements of high-founding instruction across, you know, independent of the content area. And that's something that, um, the school improvement team and our instructional coach and administrators at the, at the high school are focusing on. Taking, taking a playbook or a page from a playbook of what you heard Director Gilcream highlighting around developing checklists and doing some classroom walkthroughs and getting into social studies, three science classrooms, and a math class. That, those expectations were communicated in, in August during our PD days, and they're starting to collect that data and kind of work through what that looks like at the school improvement level. Our high school math team towards the end of last school year, um, they actually heard about this in the February PD. There was some kind of cross-pollination of this thinking classroom work from middle school to high school. Several of those high school teachers walked away with that, are excited by that line and, um, began working on that themselves in their own classrooms. And then I just, I spoke to the, uh, the, um, curriculum material here that is also continuing and wrapping up for the next round or the next modules that the high school team, uh, is looking at. And there's a conversation scheduled tomorrow in the P O C team about the next steps related to that. That, I think, Mr. Hopkins is, oh, he got some, so.
Can, can you go back, what's hiding behind that graphic, I'm not.
Yeah, um, that text did not, I did not wrap that properly, it says wrapping up ELA, so, and then techniques that we hope.
Learn from middle school.
Peers.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I should have hit on, there should have been a stop or turn on both those lines. Or put that graphic behind everything. If you go to the next slide, um, much like last year, a look ahead to the next committee of the whole on November ten. Our building administrator will be here to speak to and, um, kind of layer in additional details that they are taking on with their school improvement teams and their instructional coaches to, uh, make progress on these items and report on what efforts they did last year. Those actions. Those actions include all those indicator, all those elements to the bottom left, if we go to the next slide. The Mr. Gust- Mr. Gustine's summary slide, um, kind of, it's just a summary of what we talked about today. Those assessment results, um, included areas of both progress and challenge. Our educators and administrators have looked at that data. We're excited by the inclusion of our high grade benchmark assessment results and that are gonna help drive interaction struggle and individualized support with that my path capacity the board approved last summer. And ultimately, we continue to focus on the actions, uh, that we've identified, designed to support, and increasing all the scores that we just talked about. Questions?
I just had one question way back, you don't have to go back to all the previous slide. Both of my, sorry, my glass just literally broke on my face. I don't know why. Anyways, now I can't see, but I really cannot see you at all right now. But anyways, um, back in those initial slides, Alpine seemed to have the, a disparity between the other two elementaries. And then I heard you mention that there was one less interventionist at Alpine? I'm wondering if that's an area that we should focus on, maybe having more.
So Alpine has actually more intervention, like, um, teachers that are working with, um, groups of students. So more than the other two elementary buildings, um, they have less time with an instructional coach. So we have one, um, Janice Hoover is part-time working with students and part-time working, um, as, as the building coach. So sixty percent of kids, forty percent with, um, with teachers.
It's, prior to this year, this was the instructional coach at Alpine.
Oh, okay. And now we're just down to a part-time network.
And it's kind of the opposite too, when you look at Zoom, there seems to be the little shining spot as far as the numbers go.
So it's interesting, um, data can be really deceiving, um, and, you know, so we're, we're looking at a number, right? A number compared to ISD, a number compared to the state, we're comparing building by building. Um, but there actually are some other data points, um, that Phil and I just looked at last week that show that in compared to buildings with similar demographics, Alpine actually scores really where they should be scoring. Um, and the other two buildings, although they look like they, um, that they are doing much better, they actually are not scoring quite as high as they should be for the demograph- demographics of their buildings.
When compared to schools of similar demographic nature across the county, what is it?
So when we look at.
Are you not turning into the demographic associate now, maybe?
Yep.
Primarily.
Yeah, so they, they, they calculate like, um, the free and reduced lunch percentages and, um, I think that's.
That was one of the primarily.
Yes, yeah. So there's other ways to, to look at it, um, and to be able to see, you know, which, um, you know, which buildings are, despite the challenges, um, you know, overcoming some of them, even though it doesn't always show on the pretty little graphs that, uh, that are displayed.
And those are the conversations that I have with the building principals is not so much how they compare themselves to, you know, the other elementary schools in our district. It's how do you compare to other elementary schools that have like demographics? Because, um, you know, um, that's what we should be looking at more than anything. And if there are others that are achieving at a higher rate than we are and they have the similar demographics, what can we learn from them about what they're doing? So that we can, um, because they must be doing something, um, different. I would imagine they would be doing something different. So those are the conversations that we have.
Yeah, we wanna be, you know, talking to the districts that are meeting the odds and, um, and figuring out what's, you know, what's different. So, you know, what is Alpine doing differently that, um, is helping them, um, beat some of the odds? And, and that's really why it's important for our three buildings to have that time together to, um, be able to reflect on instructional practices and what's going well and what are the challenges and how are they overcoming them?
All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is too finance.
I have questions for finance. I think I might have a third one.
Go for it. I wanna go see.
Cause I really, I can't see. I run to anybody.
Should she come up with a question now?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm good, but, uh, obviously the, the check register and, um, summary of investment income for the bond is included in the materials. I don't know if anyone had any questions on either of those. Happy to address those.
I had a couple of check register questions.
Of course.
So, um, my first question, and this might be more of Jerry. Jerry, we have, um, we have a line entry on, and I'm not gonna ask you to bring it up, but we have a title nine, attorney fee. And we indicate a person's name. I thought we were supposed to move towards confidentiality for that.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you. Probably how it was recorded in the.
Probably, yeah. I just.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, Ross, you're here. You might be. I saw, um, a list for thirty-one fifty, Ross, class program officiating class. Do we have something where we're?
It was not last, but my kid's actually.
What was the charge of?
Thirty-one fifty, and it just said Ross, and then it said cla- dash class program officiating class.
That's Lee Ross, so she's the teacher of that officiating class.
She probably got a reimbursement for a purchase that was made of my guest.
What's an officiating class?
One of their classes that they take, and take at high school.
It's not the old P class that they took to learn to officiate?
Um, it's different then.
But I was curious what we, each of the reps and.
Yeah. So they can become an official.
There were like three sports they picked. I can't remember what they are. The cost might have been one.
We need a.
Power pump.
Yep. Brennan's in it, so.
There are specific rules and specifics for us.
Um, zins or playground equipment, I saw the fifty-nine grand there. Does that wrap up our ask for the concrete or the solid surface for, um, children with disabilities to get to the equipment? Are we done with that process now?
Yes, it wraps it up. Um, I will say that, um, it's, it, like anything else, there's going to be ongoing, um, maintenance kind of things that we do with it.
But, well, we talked about that night.
Yes.
That gets us.
Yeah.
Mark, you've got.
I don't, I haven't been there yet this fall, but I heard they've done something. Yeah, I looked, it, it did get done. The reason I say that is because, uh, because, just like at the central playground, because, um, the, what we did for, um, access to the swings as an example, is we, we, we addressed it at Central since it was already designed. And so it's not a, it's, it's a solution that will probably need to be replaced every, like, three to five years.
What is it?
It's a, it's a rubber, it's a hu- a rubber kind of a surface that they put in, um, across the playground so that they can.
It's not the beads?
No, it's not beads. It's a, it's a.
Flag?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And they piece together like a puzzle piece, uh, they kind of attach together. But there are other ways that are, um, instead of paving and putting in a more, um, permanent solution kind of thing. Cause that would have been even more cost prohibitive and taken longer to be able to do. So at some point, when we go back and redo things, that might be something that is examined. Is, is there a better solution?
Yeah, they have to keep the places every year. At some point.
It's about three to five years, I think, is what, uh, yeah.
And then, uh, the last one I got, there was, uh, a check listed for Agile Sports Tech for fifteen thousand dollars. Check eighty-five eight oh five. I just don't know what it is. I'm just curious, cuz it was a nice round fifteen thousand, which is a big number and.
What was that number again? Sorry?
It's like Huddle.
Eight-five eight oh five.
Eight-five.
Huddle, the streaming stuff.
It's the technology that we put in the, in the, um, uh, on our competition field so that they can be streamed and that, um, the, not only streamed for the public, but, uh, coaches use that for exchange, people touch and change and things like that.
That's not the, what we use for the, um, YouTube channel. That's separate, right?
We have, we have, uh, we use the Huddle camera to be able to show live stream stuff, is, is my understanding.
Oh, I thought we had a person we hired to do that. Maybe it's changed.
No, we don't have anybody that stands over the recorder and records. Everything is done now with cameras, yeah.
I thought somebody had, not like on their shoulder, but I was thinking it was in dry pod and they were. Okay, that's all of that.
That's my understanding. If I'm wrong, I'll get that. I can get that directly. But I do know, I'm pretty confident that the, the purchase is for Huddle subscription.
Great.
It's not check register, but while we have you, have we made progress in getting the, um, transparency update on the website?
Nope, it's on the list though.
Do we have a target?
Um, unfortunately, I cannot, cuz I have to give you an update on the audit first, which is definitely a priority right now with the audit, so. Yeah, I do not have timeline yet, but only because we're trying to deal with the audit, which definitely would be a priority over the transparency.
Yeah, I, I definitely think audit is a priority, but we do need to at least have an idea of what, I mean, we're five years overdue.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Um, yeah, so we have the, uh, audit in process. I, I will continue to, to figure that out. We're staffing up. It should get easier to, we don't have full-time permanent staff. We do have temporary staff in place. But as we get staffing, it will be easier to parse out this, these tasks to other people on the team and, and get that done, so hopefully.
Well, I'm sure you'll get into this, but the audit has a mandate, right? Like it has to be filed by date. What's that date?
That, pardon my update.
I know, but can we just share it now?
Yeah, so normally it'd be November one.
All right, so if November one's the end drop dead date, it sounds like it's the way it's going. It will likely go post to that date.
It's going to go beyond that date.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna go.
So I was trying to give Tracy a date, right? So nothing moves until Thanksgiving perhaps, right?
Most likely.
And so now we're saying, okay, then say, okay, now, once that's done, you can shift to this transparency update, and that's a four-week project. So by the turn of the year, I don't know that it is. I just make the, the point is, she, she may agree, maybe they're thinking November fifteenth, when in reality, it's gonna be starting on November fifteenth and taking a few weeks. So that's why I was trying to give kind of a general timeframe.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, it, cuz, yeah, I, I think, you know, to the, the last meeting, like I have no, I, I don't anticipate it being a difficult project, but I don't know how to use said software that's on the website. I have a contact and they've reached out to me and they're happy to sit down and go through that process of, you know, removing files, updating files.
On to that point, and I'm not familiar, unless familiar with it, do you? But it seems like a pretty standard process that all schools have to do, so can we outsource that and just have someone come in and update it for us? Or would that be a kind of additional burden?
Well, they're gonna have to have access to a lot of our, um, you know, have to know what our financial data, how do you wanna use.
Honestly, I think if we were to stay on top, like, I don't think it would be an overly burdened sum. I think A, just knowing how to use whatever that setup is, and then doing the cleanup and then just staying on top of it for the ones here, just making sure that we're going through that process. So once we get it done, like, I assure you, we will stay on top of it. It'll be easy. Uh, we'll have a process for that. We just have not been able to get to said process yet, but I will assure you, when we have that, it will be crisp, it will be clean.
I was just trying to promise it all.
Yeah, 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 we will, we will have it under, under control, so. Yeah, I think the, the biggest thing right now is our audit, we started that about a month ago. We are a month in, still in the process, obviously, uh, but we've definitely encountered our share of challenges, uh, during this audit, which is causing it to run longer than expected. So, um, you know, we talked about November first drop dead date. We have been trying everything to keep that date in front of us. Um, I spoke with our auditors on Friday, and I was pretty transparent with them that I thought that was gonna be really difficult to do, only because it's not November one, like us finishing. We have to basically have everything done close to two weeks before November one, cuz if anyone knows auditing, it has to go through their internal review process, aud, you know, partners, et cetera. You know, so, so I just started looking at the calendar last week. I was like, I just don't think this is going to be so. So, you know, the repercussion on that, the biggest one is our state aid payment. If we don't meet the November one deadline, they can withhold that payment basically until we complete our audit. Superintendent Hopkins and I were chatting. Luckily, the way that our cash flow is, with all our summer cash collection, we are sitting in a great spot from a cash flow perspective, uh, but I definitely don't want this to drag out beyond a month. I'm trying to get that pushed through and done, but, um, there's definitely been some challenges. You know, as I came in the door, I would say there was an expectation, understanding that the books were primarily closed for last year, and I would say that it was anything but that. So, um, including work dating back to last July and August, that was not done. I, I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to answer more questions on it, but I'll say there was lots of undone work, um, that I've been trying to unwrap myself. I have a senior account attempt that started two weeks ago, who has been great, but again, he's only been in C for two weeks and he is helping me unwind things. We've listed some help from outside with grant work, a former, uh, director of finance at the school district is helping us reconcile some of our grants. So, I mean, I've, and thanks to Superintendent Hopkins, we've allocated resources to that, but now it's just time and digging into things to, to get it done. So definitely not the news I wanna share, uh, but, uh, you know, we felt like we had to get this group looped in on, on where we were at with the audit.
So they withhold payment and file? Is there penalties associated with that? Were you actually forfeit anything?
Just, to just delay it.
Yeah. This, three, three years ago, we ran into this? This isn't our, our first miss, which is more frustrating, right? Because it starts to, it starts to be a trend.
Yeah, and I, and although, so FID is, uh, supposed to be, uh, submitted by the, um, by November first. You know, uh, if we somehow had everything submitted by, I don't know what that magic date is in November, but the state aid payments are, uh, are issued November, you know, the twentieth of each month, whatever the, uh, Michigan Department of Treasury needs in terms of, uh, this is the drop dead date for them to, for it to make the state aid payment. I don't know, it was November tenth. I don't know what that day is.
My question would be is what date do you need to file it by to not lose cash flows, meaning your summer tax payments can, can sustain until that slot?
We don't even wanna go there. I mean, we, we, this needs to be done well in advance of us.
Yeah, yeah, we would, I, I, I don't, I wouldn't foresee us hitting that. So, yeah, we have plenty, yeah, I would not foresee us hitting that. Again, my, my goal is hopefully no more than that month, right? An extra month to get, you know, to set November one to set, and obviously we have holidays in there and stuff, so like, I, you know, Thanksgiving, so like, I want to try and push it up, but, uh, we definitely need the extra time and, and especially the issues we're encountering, just making sure that we do this correctly, um, as well.
Transitions are tough, right? You transition right about the time of the audit. We probably aren't super surprised there's some uncovered surprises, so to speak. So I think a lot of that's understandable. Obviously, if there's any known issues right now and it's appropriate, we wanna know, like, major things or it's just no, we need to work through it, that's a different answer than, hey, we have an actual mess up that could be, you know, we thought we had eleven percent. We actually have seven and a half, like that's the type of stuff that we wanna know sooner than later.
Have we talked to Jason at all?
Jason is assisting with some of the bankrupts that were not completed right now. So we had a meeting, when was that? Friday, I think?
Friday we had.
Yeah, yeah. So he was engaged to assist with some of that, and that has gone longer than expected with some of his other obligations, obviously. But, um, yeah, there's an expectation that some of that, most of it should be complete this week, so we have a check in two days.
Well, we talked about that, so.
Thanks for the update.
Yes, of course. Any other questions on?
I would just keep this a standing topic on.
For sure. Yep, yep. And, yeah, and it's your, like, nothing that I've seen, like, issue, it just. Yep, yep, and, yeah, and, like, nothing that I've seen, like, issue, it's just nothing that's not completed and trying to, to work through it, so. Uh, yeah, exactly, exactly, so, uh, but yeah, if we do find something, we'll be sure to bring it to the group and then. Last, we have state budget update on there. Uh, we have a budget, yay, so that's good, you know, they, they beat the clock. I don't know that I have a ton of an update. Um, they did have, the, the business, Ken ISD, the business officer, did have a call on Friday. Um, I was unable to attend. I had a prior obligation. Um, they did send up the recording, which I started to watch a little bit today. Um, it seems like there, a lot of people are just waiting to unpack, right? Like what's going on there, you know? Kind of a lot of speculation talk, but really they're like, we really just need to unpack. There was a lot of information and, you know, I, what I did hear is like, all that happened really behind closed doors. There wasn't a lot of transparency, so it makes it hard to know, like, how they got to, to where they, where they got. So, um, as we have more information, we will, we'll unpack that.
But you have the end results, right?
We, it depends on what end results, yeah.
I was gonna ask, because like, the, you know, if you guys read just the last news from the Capitol from MESB, like a couple days ago, it gave a document that was like a district by district impact document, and I was just curious, you know, like, like, what all of this means, in, in relation to us, you know, specifically, like the mix of stuff.
Yeah, so this, so this document, I have our page, or just went to that document, and then you can search Kennel Hills and, and pull up any district and you can see, the interesting thing is, is it doesn't include all of the elements of what was, uh, approved in the budget. It includes some of those elements. So if you, just looking at the elements that was, this widely circulated document, it shows us because of the per people foundation allowance going up by four hundred and forty-two dollars per student, because of the increase of about twenty-five percent to at-risk, and, um, you know, a little bit to bilingual, but then you have to back out some other things that are no longer being funded, um, and the shift in MIPSers, which is a complete mystery to everybody at this point, that does not really, and like, truly knows what all those numbers represent. It shows us as a school district of posi-, you know, positively benefiting from the budget, just looking at these items by one point two million.
Yeah.
But looking at, like, the, uh, you can't see this one, hold up, but you remember this, you know, this document? When I start looking at, with Ken, start looking at these numbers between the, and now looking at what the actual is, um, you know, it's for us, until we, again, see all the other things, it's more like a hundred thousand dollars to the good instead of one point two million dollars here, because we had all these other things that we had, the Bepir's grant, and all these other things, the, um, 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 smaller learning communities grant that we received, it was all one-time thing. Those all go away, and things, so when you start, when you start looking at everything, it has less of an impact to us as, on the surface, than what it, than what it appears it could be. So, but we'll get through it. We'll get through all of these things.
Because we know like the totals, but it's like, what portion of that pie do we get? That's all the formulas and everything that's in process.
Yeah, cause the other thing that, yeah, cause the other thing that that doc, it does say at the bottom, I can't, it's so small. It says at the bottom, does not account for changes in enrollment. We know that our enrollment, we were budgeting, uh, for a loss in enrollment. So it says that, but then one of the columns does say increases due to, or change, and that says, uh, at-risk changes, everyone, decreases due to enrollment. So it says in the column header that it's, that they factored in the changes in enrollment, but down here they say it doesn't include, so I don't.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my, my question is, she, like, I, obviously you're gonna talk about it on number two on the report, though. It's like, if we, we're only a hundred grand to the good with all of this, and then people don't vote yes on this coming up, what does that look like, you know?
It's that way.
Cause we say, what is the million to the good for us here? So, yeah.
Any other questions for Ken?
I just, I just have to say, I, and I, I think I say this to Ken almost daily, I, I appreciate his, you know, his, the can-do attitude, like, this is, you know, I've seen this before, we'll get through it, we'll get systems in place, this won't be, you know, I assure you, this won't be, you know, once we get rolling, kinda thing, but, it is, I know it's, um, you know, it's been challenging to say those.
Tough transition.
Tough transition, and, um, a part of, part of it is because we do, are using a different software than so many other districts are. We adopted that software, uh, not too long ago, and so there, we're not in public schools, it's a school district that is probably leading West Michigan in the, in the implementation, the use of the software, and then there are.
Did you see Wyoming?
Wyoming Public Schools, you know, so Ken has been in contract with Wyoming in terms of, you know, hoping to get some support from them. But so you have Wyoming Public, you have Northview Public, that's a recent adopter of it as well, you have Greenville Public, and then us. And then, you know, so many other districts in the county will, will say, we'll, we'll help, we'll help, but we can't help in terms of, when it comes to the actual software that you're using, because they don't use it, kinda the thing. So, but that complicates matters a little bit, we don't have a lot of colleagues out there that.
This, we recently switched to this, didn't we?
Yeah, since, what, year two, is it year two of implementation, so, and, and we have the, the company, um, who's providing a scope of work for us to be able to kinda, um.
Well, if North, if Northview's just moving to it, things like that, it sounds like it is the right, it was positive change. It's just a growing pains that go along with it, or are you saying that you think that maybe it wasn't the right?
Well, I think, I think, given the circum, it's really hard when, when you have a new team and.
If you don't have a call for it locally, to be able to bounce off, and if you gotta pay and call.
It complicates things.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, from what I've heard, you could find advantages and disadvantages to each of the systems that are out there. But, yeah, the biggest challenge is we don't have anyone that really knows how, like, that was trained and implemented the system and understands truly how to drive it, and so, uh, yeah, we're constantly online, you know, opening up help tickets, which is not the best way to operate, um.
So you have to be the super user, or everybody else.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not even close, not even close. And so you just find yourself constantly responding versus being proactive to how to handle these things, like, oh, if something broke, I have to open a ticket. Uh, and quite frankly, not every, one of their techs are created equal. Some are great and others, they work, you, and you're like, that, that, yeah, that didn't help. I guess I gotta call back and get a different tech, because that was not helpful at all. And so, that can be frustrating, especially when it's a weaker payroll and payroll, like, some things are time-sensitive. Payroll is obviously time-sensitive, and so when you're up against a clock, and you have a support person that can't really support you the best, that, it's super frustrating. So, um, yeah, those are just some of the challenges we're up against. Um, but, yeah, I, the, the biggest thing is the scope of work with the consultant. I mean, I engaged them a month ago, and so I still don't have a scope of work. They're, they keep ensuring me it's close, close, but, uh, you know, I tell them, you know, time is of the essence, that the sooner we can get, um, training for the team, the, the better, so.
Okay, any other questions? The president, a lot of time to step out for a moment, so. Moving over to Superintendent Kirk.
Yeah, just a few items tonight. So, um, count day is behind us now. Um, again, the numbers that I provide to you every week from the start of the school through count day are head count, um, based on what secretaries are reporting to us. Um, and so you can kinda see out the cadence each week. Um, wait for this to the right is the, you know, is where we started the school year, and as you work across to the left is the most recent, so count day numbers reported by the buildings. Um, coincidentally, um, the two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three ma-, on a head count matches the FTE count that was projected by Plant Moran, remarkable. Wild, um, it's completely coincidental by, in all regards, although, you know, I'm sure Plant Moran would say that they, you know, that they got this down to a science. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot that goes into it, a lot of variability there. This won't be our number, right? I mean, these are students that were counted on count day, but the reality of that, that does change, because not every student rep, most students represented full FTE, but not all students do, so you can anticipate that it will be slightly different than that. But it, that is, um, I was getting really hopeful when the numbers were up there a bit higher, but as typically the case, as you get closer to count day, those numbers get far more refined. Um, and so you can see, uh, we budgeted it on a twenty-eight eighty-three blended count. Um, our fall count last year was twenty-nine, this was audited, so by around December, January of this school year, we'll get an audited number that will, that will build a base, uh, future things on, but right, our, uh, audited count last year was, and I rounded it off, but it was twenty-nine thirty-five, and our spring count was twenty-eight eighty-four, so we're basically where we were in the spring. Um, and we, we, we retained that number.
Jerry, before we move on, have we made any progress getting that MHSA A number updated?
So the number, the, the number is accurate, it is what we reported, and it is reflects only the high school. So what the MHSA is, uh, has said is we have to go with that number, because all of their divisions are based on that, that number. Uh, and so if we have a student from Pathways who is participating in athletics, and thus far we have not this year, if we have any, then we have to work with them to enroll them, make sure that they're enrolled in the high school, um, at least for other six classes. So that's kinda where we are.
I don't know what that means.
That's the MHSA rule, that we have to.
No, I don't know what that means when you say make sure they're enrolled in the high school.
That means they have to be taking classes from the high school in order to be, uh, participate in athletics.
So we have just excluded all of our Pathway students from participating in sports this year?
If they choose to participate, we'll work with them so that they can participate in sport. We haven't excluded anybody.
We would have to move them, they could go to Pathways, is what you're saying.
We'll have to work with how that, what does that look like for them. But at this point, we have zero students that are participating in athletics, so.
Are we gonna get that corrected for next year?
We'll have to talk about what, what do we, what do we choose to do for that? Like, we're gonna have to talk about as a team about.
We, we did.
I know, and we may have to revisit that, because if we have zero students participating, or one, or two, yet it's, you know, it, there, we're counting ninety of them, um, that's a, that's not what most schools are doing. Uh, but we'll have to talk about that. But that's where it is at this point. For MHSA, that's, that's the rule we have to live by.
That has, I know now that we've changed into a different conference, it's not the implication there on, you know, that, but it's when it gets to regionals and those other ones.
So what it, what it impacts, yeah, what it impact, it, it impacts every, uh, sport except for football. The reason why it does not impact football is because there are eight divisions in football, so, um, and the rest of the sports are only four divisions, you know? And so, um, so it doesn't change where we land in terms of our football division, but it does impact where we land in the other ones. Not sus-, barely, but it does impact where, where we land in those, so.
So then, like you said, we can revisit that, until when you, when you guys re, have to re.
Yeah, that's really confusing. I wish that, it's not, it's not the MHSA's fault, it's our fault. It is absolutely our fault, but it's really confusing. Um, and we've been confused by it as well. Fortunately, we've counted the Pathway students, if you look back previously. But when we submit our resolution that we do in, typically it's in June of every year, they usually send it out, it's usually in June. We have included on that, we've expli-, some years we've explicitly listed Pathways, and other years we've not. But they've always been part of our number, so that we've, even though they've not, maybe not, some years been listed on that resolution, either, I mean, it's, it just.
I went back and looked at the last couple of years and they weren't listed, but the numbers.
But the, but they were enrollment-wise, they were included, so, yeah, yeah. But we just gotta, we.
Which also could be a issue if you don't list that, perhaps, right?
It hasn't been an issue, no, they've always, as long as they're included in our numbers, yeah. So, good question, that's where it is. Um, the, and you can see with our high school numbers, where they are, eight twelve. Uh, I think actually, like, I looked at something that the MHSA has right now, and they have us listed at, I think, eight oh three.
Yes.
You saw that too, yeah?
I do.
And I don't know where that number's coming from.
I don't either. That's why I'm concerned.
Yeah, and it's not the number that we reported. Eight oh three is not a number that we reported, to my knowledge. So, I, I don't know where, where that number, but I saw eight oh three, I don't remember where I was working, but I saw that. Um, so this is pretty small, I apologize, uh, but I wanted, you know, so, wanted to dig into the numbers. Um, so, yes, in the end, it, the numbers coincidentally ended up at twenty-eight eighty-three. Um, but when you look at the numbers, what, where were there some variances? Because that's what we need to be able to look at going forward. Um, is be able to, um, so when we build our budgets and stuff, we can say, well, they, is there any trends associated with this? Especially if we continue to use Plant Moran to help us with our projections. For example, Alpine Kindergarten, we take a look at that, combining Canites and kindergarten, that is based on their, uh, projection compared to their, our counting number, their projection was significantly higher than what we added up. In fact, we only had five students who would have been in a Canites classroom, so those are actually, because the kindergarten class size are small enough at Alpine, they're actually part of the kindergarten classes now, now at Alp-, at Alpine. Rather than running a class of five students, it made more sense to make them part of the three kindergarten classes that we have there. Um, and, um, incorporate it there. On the other hand, Central Elementary, their, um, um, count day numbers were quite a bit higher than what they had projec-, what Plant Moran had projected. So, it, you know, it's, uh, um, again, I'm not sure why the differences there, because it wasn't as noticeable in any other, the other places, um.
I was, I was just saying, it's not an exact science.
No, it's not, it's not, no.
You can't, you know, who moved in, who moved out, what.
And in some cases, we have, so it's, it just, I wanted to dig into it to kinda see where there was.
That feels like the most, uh, guessable, like, or it's just a toss-up, because are they gonna enter this district or not at that age? Versus have they been a part and wanna stay? So, yeah.
Kindergarten's always tough, and that's why if you try to get a, a handle on that from year to year, it makes your staffing a lot easier. The other grade was second grade overall. You can see that we, in blue means that our numbers were high, trended high, ended up higher than what they projected. That means that they, that, um, they were lower, so second grade was a, and, and again, we're talking about less than five percent variance, I think, here. It's not much at all. Same thing for seventh grade. Our seventh grade numbers are pretty solid.
Has a bubble pressure, yeah.
It is very, it is very, it is, it's even higher than what we had anticipated it could be. Uh, same thing for ninth grade, that's another one. Typically, we see more coming in at sixth grade and ninth grade than other grades, because they're, oftentimes it's a good spot for them to move, uh, from a, you know, maybe a charter school, Walker Charter, or West Michigan, where I have a science academy, above that one's a K-12. They sometimes will come to their closest district because of flooding and club off rates that we have in our community, so. However, at the tenth grade and eleventh grade, we saw our numbers lower than what we had projected, and that's, you know, the opposite of kindergarten in the sense that they're, and you should have a pretty good idea, solid idea. So these are conversations that I'm having with Miss Roman's High School, just about, we've got, uh, like, we've got a, you know, we, we anticipated they would be lower because of watching the, the students' degree levels mature, matriculate through, but there's, there's other things.
Can you refresh? I know it's like they have to, like, when you get the, uh, transfer data, like, where did they end up? I know, feel like there was a little lag on that for the end of the year, but then, they, they also needed to be in another public school.
Correct.
So we wouldn't ever hear if they went to something else, right?
The, the data that we get from the state, which is, shows the trans-, the mobility rate and where they, that does not include school, so, but.
That feels, yeah, that feels super relevant if we can find that out, just like.
And we'll have to, as soon as they publish it, we're gonna have that, yeah. And we can already take a look at, like, where our, based on our graph, I showed this, I shared this with the board a couple, two years ago, I think it was, like, we can see where they, where they're, where we're sending records to, if it's to another school, you know, to another, wherever they are, we, we show that data. So that's the first item, is count day information. So from a budget perspective, the takeaway there is, we, you know, our accounting numbers represent what we had budgeted for, so. Um, count day, it's a wash, or based on enrollment, it's a wash from what we had budgeted for. Um, and then, kind of, per people foundation allowance, it's a plus, for, we have budgeted for four hundred dollars, and for ten thousand dollars per student, um, and it was four forty-two, so that's a slight. And it was four forty two, so that's a slightly, a bit of an increase on a per pupil basis. Second item, enhancement village, just want you to know that there's information that's out there. I included at your table, the, what they call the home card. This is something that's made available. These are all informational materials that were produced by the Kent Intermediate School District with funds from the Kent Intermediate School District. And they were produced for each district, so ours is in Kennewah Hills. But if you were to go to another district, if you were to see theirs, it represents information that's specific to their district, both the impact to the household, and also what, how districts have chosen to utilize the revenue that's been generated through the, through the enhancement village. So these information, these, all the materials that have been provided have been gone, have gone through, you know, attorney to review them, to make sure that they comply with the Campaign Finance Act. But, and you'll notice on the back of them, they say that, you know, how they pay for, which is also a requirement of the Campaign Finance Act. It does say Kennewah Hills. I assure you that the district has not paid anything for these materials. It's because we have some, in the sense of reproducing them or mailing anything like that, the district has them. But we have people that are out talking about these things, so we have some in-kind contributions for, for participation in that. You have to report those as part of the.
Can I ask, like, you know, obviously it's kind of ISD's kind of project, right? That we're helping to support, right? Just getting it across the finish line, the ones that are, like, getting the funds and then dispersing as well. Do they have any sort of, I don't know, you know, that kind of stuff? Because what I, what I see, just, I know there are some districts that also have their own bonds that are up for vote right now. I see a lot of negativity on some of those larger districts. You kind of think, maybe, you know, if it's a no to their school, it's gonna be an automatic no on this too. Or if it's a yes, it might be an automatic yes, it might not be out of discretion. Like, they have a, I think that's the win, yeah.
Hold on, yeah. So they, so they, the ISD contracted with Epic, um, are a well in advance of, of the school districts bringing this to the boards for consideration. And in that early polling, it was polling, well, it was polling positively. Even prior, I don't know if you've ever been a part of the poll, but they always just kind of give you the facts and then, and then ask you whether you, your level of support. And then, then they give you more information about, you know, more details if you will, to see if it changes your, how you, I can give you information, how you might vote. It polled favorably, even, you know, once individuals just knew that there was a item on the ballot. Then when they were given more information about what it would do for districts, that increased the. But I don't know that they've gone back and done a more recent one to see where it is. I can tell you, they, they are, you know, they anticipate that about ninety percent of the votes that are, that are capped in this election will be done through an absentee ballot. There's going to be a very high absentee ballot voter turnout. They don't anticipate nearly as many actually going to the polls, I know that before. So all of the, all of the information that's been provided, just like we did when we had our proposal in twenty twenty four, is we sent information to everybody that received an absentee ballot because we wanted them to have information. So, and then they could make it hopefully, you know, an informed decision with that information. So we've sent so far, they have mailed on our behalf, two mailers, and you can see those in the left. There's a third one that will be going out. Each mailing, they have, each time they mail last, because they also track who's.
Already voted.
So if you've already, if you're an absentee ballot person and you've already voted, you will not, hopefully not see another mailer, kind of a thing. They're gonna also do a, a general election mailer to anybody that is, you know, registered to vote, separate from the absentee.
How do you track that at a household level? If there's two people in the household that are registered voters, as soon as one votes, you stop?
Uh, no, they have it by the, by, by the individual.
Yeah.
So if you didn't have three registered voters in the house, you'd get three of these?
You only get one, but if somebody still has to vote, you're gonna get one.
Okay.
If you have three.
You don't get knocked off the list until you've got no more.
Until the last, yeah, so encourage, if you don't want to get the mailings, encourage everybody in your household to vote, kind of, is the subject. So, and then, and so we'll, we'll have these available at conferences as well, just as information for people that. But we also, we also have a group of individuals where they've been assigned places. So you may have had somebody knock on your door, you may not have as well. If you're an absentee, here's the deal, if you're an absentee voter who historically votes in these off-cycle elections, you're gonna get a knock, you should have gotten a knock on your door. So we, we as a school district, we're given a list of households to, to go to their door and provide them information, answer questions they have. And our administrative team has done that, along with others that they might have enlisted. We've reached eighty percent of the houses that we were asked to go to, which is significantly higher than what other districts have been able to do thus far, so.
How are we doing this? Is this, I'm assuming this isn't volunteer, is it staff, right?
It's, it's the, I mean, administrators assigning them and then keeping track of the.
Their hours?
Yeah, of their, they're at, they're on their own, they're volunteer.
Oh, then, so we do volunteer.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the evening or on the weekends that they, that they do that, absolutely.
Wow.
So we, so, but again, it's getting the information out. We still have some information that we'll have to, that will be going to parents through, because everybody that's a registered voter will get something anyway. But we'll also have something that goes to our parents, and we'll have something that goes to our staff. As this, our, this is Turner mentioned, this is for us a million dollars. And so each year, it's a million dollars, kind of, if it does not pass in this particular time, you know, there is an opportunity. I'm not suggesting that boards will choose to do it, but there is an opportunity that in twenty twenty six, they could go out. Because it, it does, this does go through the twenty twenty six, so there is opportunity to do that again in twenty twenty six. If, you know, if there's a desire to do that.
When's the timing of our next one?
So that has not been determined at this point, so that, that's, we know that we have a ballot issue that will go out in, I wanna say twenty twenty seven, but I need to look back at that just to make sure, for our head, for our operation, not Homestead, which doesn't impact households, but we still have, it'll be on ballot. We'll have to do that because of, we'll have that in ten years. But we'll have that coming up on the ballot.
Do we usually try to stagger and not do?
We try to whenever we can, and that's why I particularly like this particular, this date, because we didn't have anything on the ballot.
Right.
You know, because, as mentioned, there are other districts, some pretty big ones, that have their own things on the ballot, and then this as well. So it helps because they can, you know, get the message out, you know, on all things at the same time. But if there's, you know, it, it may not.
It can feel like a lot of.
Feel like a lot of ask, right?
Hands out, yeah.
So that's the enhancement village information, and I'll keep you posted on that. The third item, there was a mention last time about board budget. And so Julie helped pull this together, looking at, one, when the board approved the budget back in June, there was an acknowledgement that there would be, that we would cut back a little bit on what that would look like. So we factored that in, and also factored in the additional cost, like the increase in cost. For example, CBA classes are now a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's an increase from what they were in the past. So there were less than a hundred before, is that right?
Yeah, ninety-nine, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. So now they're a hundred and twenty-five. Registration for the fall conference, for those of you that are going for the full conference, is four hundred and sixty-five. And then we, I computed what it would cost for mileage reimbursement, computed, you know, what it would cost, you know, for the hotel and stuff like that, if you're there the whole time, they kind of. And then kind of worked through this, you know, so this, you can kind of see what those costs are associated with. And some people choose to use.
Their budget.
And some people choose not to. So then the next level of conversation is, like, how do we, you know, how do we maximize this group's opportunity at professional development when some may not choose to use a resource? But this is the resources that are available.
So the footnote you've had.
Yes.
So asterisk, this is fall leadership conference in Traverse City. I'm assuming that relates to mileage, but you've also got a single asterisk on NSBA legislative conference, if you, something went wrong there.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's probably an asterisk that doesn't go on. It should be the fall conference of mileage. I'm not sure why that's on that one. Disregard that.
So one of the things that I wanted to talk about was, we've, you know, we kind of played it by ear. When one individual wasn't gonna use theirs, what are we gonna do? You know, can they de-quit it to someone else? Do we, how do we handle that? That's, that's kind of, I mean, it's really nice, thank you for putting this together and seeing it all laid out. But I think it's becoming more important that we're stewards of this money and that we talk about, like, I'll just, I'll say Mark, right? Mark typically doesn't go to the conferences. So is there, is there a place that we give that money back to? What happens to it? Because it's, it's a use it or lose it, it doesn't carry forward. And I kind of look to you to say, Gary, hey, here's, here's some places where it's small numbers, right? For a big budget, but are there ways that if we don't use these, it would help you anywhere?
Well, it's like anything else. So we have, it's like any other budget. There are situations where our, our building principals, because of maybe some unforeseen costs, that, that, you know, they put a lot of thought into their budget, but they don't always think of everything. And so something comes up. They have the ability to transfer funds from one account to another. So in this, I mean, the board could choose to say, well, they're not individual accounts. You know, one person's going to, you know, let another person on the board use their resources because they need more. This only accounts, because of the increase in CBA class, only accounts for four. We used to pay for seven. So now it's four, but, and some people may have more than classes, but they need to take them, somebody else has been, you know, Melissa would probably say, I've taken most of the classes that exist, so.
Right.
There's, so I think that there's room for that. If you ask me what, you know, what good stewards of the money, what our buildings do is, they, you know, they spend what they need to spend and what isn't spent is carried over in fund balance, so that it can be re-appropriated the next year based on where the needs are. Rather than, we've gotten them to a spot where, rather than spend it or lose it, it's more about spend it if you need to, and then if you don't, we'll revisit it next year. And it may be that you, you have greater needs next year than you end up having this year. So you end up, as a building, benefiting from it anyway, not spending it, but it's not a guarantee. It doesn't come back to you as you expected. So I mean, is it, you know, I, I would say it's, it's more about what the board feels they, they need in terms of, you know, like, they have the resources that they need, working within this budget that you have.
Are you wanting to, like, you're not talking about moving it between board members, I mean.
Yes, I am.
So are you pro or anti there? Or I was thinking you were actually saying, can we move it to something completely different on a budget line or something? Well, what are you just talking about? Do you want us to be able to do that, or you don't want us to, or what?
I want us to have limitations before we do it. What we've done in the past is someone who said, I wanna go to this thing, and someone else said, oh, I've got extra money, you can just have mine. And it's like, well, why does that, your friend, why do you give your friend money when we might have a new board member that hasn't taken classes, or we might have another need as a board that we could invest it in? I just, it, this is gonna sound, this is just me being direct, you know me, I just say it, right? It feels sometimes like it's backroom dealings versus us discussing as a board how to spend the money.
Could you alleviate that by just putting it in one big pot? And there's not individual monies for each, it's just, this is your money you can spend. And then each board member turn in, if they have a desire to go to a conference, turn in their request?
We can, but it's a, it would be, and it's not harder to track, but you, you would have to be more aware of. You, like, you may, somebody may be far more interested in stuff that happens in the fall and utilizes, you know, a lot of those resources in the fall, and then it comes to spring and they're like, oh, I wanted to go, like, I was really, for whatever reason, that was a better time for me to attend, and now there, there aren't resources there for me to do that.
It was just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's, I mean, it's fair, I mean, it's one would, that would have been a different way of doing it, yeah. What I can do is I'd be happy to continue to provide an update on, kind of, where, because Julie has a, I just made a screenshot of this one page, but she has another sheet where she has itemized, and she's, she keeps track of the, the, which, the costs that she's aware of. And so we, so you kind of, we'll have an idea, and she can update you individually about where you are. Certainly you can always ask, but she can also provide an update individually to see how we're tracking with some of this stuff. And I don't perceive it as an immediate concern, but it will become a concern.
I am open to the discussion of reallocation amongst. The only comment I would have is we kind of ask all of our schools, various departments, to adhere to a budget. And so we have our budget, and so like, what we do by example would be, instead of budget, we feel, we will stick to it.
We're not talking about increasing or decreasing, you're talking.
I'm talking about the individual person.
Oh, okay, have that person, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna ask Sinzer to stick to a budget, and actually Julie to stick to mine.
Well, then you say that within the buildings, they can.
Within the building, but we don't, if, if, Sinzer doesn't say, I'm not gonna spend all my supply money, so I, I'm gonna gift it to another building. Kind of, that, it doesn't work that way.
Right.
It's within the building.
If I were just like to play devil's advocate, because I stay within mine and I, if not below, or whatnot. But like, if there's one person or multiple people who don't take advantage of the funds that they have, and there's others that want to learn skills and knowledge and stuff to be better board members, that's like, would that not be a positive thing? I think that definitely talking about it so that it's not just like, hey, you, you, makes sense, but like, not necessarily, not necessarily saying like, hey, you went over, if there's, if there's, I mean, we're talking, it's not like you each have like a lit account. It's just, it's, this is budgeted towards a board, but you have divided it out so that we are cognizant of and using it, right? So it's not like, like, changing line items in an actual accounting software or something like that. So if it's like, hey, I wanna go, is there anyone else who wants to go? I ran a thing, are others utilizing their money? Are we doing it in a fair way or something? I think that that seems fine. Versus like, hey, only stay out of your lane or your thing. I don't know. I, more education for boards is great, but like I said, I don't really have a dog in the fight. I try to utilize the money that I have and stick right to that, so.
Yeah, I'm not opposed. I just wanted to have that conversation, that's all.
So I think good conversation, honestly, I don't, doesn't seem to be a lot of strong feelings either way at this point, so maybe we reflect on it a bit, and we can revisit people, right?
How would you prefer, do you, would you prefer a regular update from?
It would be nice. Well, it would be nice, maybe like a half point mark, especially if people have gone to the fall conference. They might not actually even know where they're, they lay or something like that, so that go, coming into the spring, they know. That would be helpful.
Certainly can do that, you know, but know that you can also reach out to Julie and she'll help you.
Anytime.
And we revisit it when we look, kind of, evaluate where we are. And if you get there sooner than that, you'll have to have the conversation sooner. So if you know that you're depleting your funds and you still have some things, then let's have a conver.
Well, and this is like, we've run into this a few times with NSBA, right? We're encouraged to go for the scholarship, but I think three of us have already used the scholarship, so.
Yes, it, it, we, we, somebody may wanna go and not have that, may wanna apply for a scholarship, which is available now.
But, but it might be somebody that's already got the scholarship, isn't eligible, and it's like. But, but it might be somebody that's already got the scholarship, isn't eligible, and it's like, how do we determine which one of us gets to use this? It's, I just think it's worth having discussions versus assuming.
My last item, we talked about this previously, disappointed, I know I reported it through my week's updating, it was brought up at a board meeting. At East Kentwood, although there was a lot of support for the proposal, in, between the coaches, athletic directors and so forth, that did not get to the board for, for consideration, which is unfortunate, but that's reality. I included my weekly updated update with an, with the information leading to tonight. I can share with you that the MHSAA, you know, because they have their own timelines associated with this. They met two Thursdays ago, I think it was two Thursdays ago, for their regular skip on meeting. And they have contingently approved this if the Board of Eds also approved this. So it goes away if there isn't approval, but they had, I mean, they had to keep their, their process going as well. So we have a letter from the MHSAA saying that just that, their executive committee met, they reviewed the elements of the proposal, they approved it contingent upon the other parties, Board of Education's and otherwise approving of this as well. And what that is, is entering into an agreement with Grand Rapids Christian, they would be the host, which would mean our co-op would dissolve. And I think that's the hardest part about all of this, is knowing that that's a temporary, would have to have, happen temporarily for us to go into another co-op with a different host. They also have Cedar Springs as part of their existing co-op already. But, you know, and this was not, you know, a result of lack of reaching out, trying to get something in play. Hockey is just a different, it's, it's, I could say this about other sports too, but hockey's a tough one for a variety of reasons. We ultimately believe and hope for that at some point we'll have possibly an opportunity with, to get involved with something more RCA-based. There are only a few districts in the RCA that have ice hockey either through a, being a host, like Sparta is a host. Or we were a host before this year, but most of them are part of a co-op. They join onto a co-op in order to have enough skaters to be able to, to safely compete. So I, here's a list of, from Athletic Director Willock, he's here too to answer any questions, but reaching out to various, and keep in mind too, these are meant to be two-year agreements. So sometimes they're in the middle of an agreement too, and that doesn't help matters either in terms of how to navigate that kind of thing. So in some cases, it may be appealing to a particular school district, but they, but they're in the middle of an agreement, and they have to kind of wait for that to kind of work through. So there's a list of the different schools that were contacted and the results of those, and, and, you know, I have to believe that all possible options were explored. My recommendation is that we enter into the cooperative agreement. We don't expect that this will be a long-term, I believe that this has already been discussed with Grand Rapids Christian. It's appealing that Cedar Springs is there, because they are another RCA school, but that would mean we would also, the board has to approve the entry into an agreement. The board does not have to approve the development to contact with, I think it was Sparta, that they wanted their, their son to try to be part of that program. So that, at least the contact was made. But beyond that, have you heard from any other parents about, I mean, this is, I don't know that everybody's celebrating this, but they certainly understand that it's, it's our unfortunate reality at this point, so.
So there is a board for the Kennebec Hills hockey program? And they have funds, and they have bylaws, and the bylaws talk about what happens to those funds or the dissolution, dissolution?
Yeah.
Is that the right word, dissolving of this? Are we involved in that at all?
I don't, I can't, I, I know I'm not.
Do we oversee that that gets carried out, and what happens with that money?
We're not involved, it's their separate board, so they're the ones that, that manage that. If they ask me for my recommendation, my recommendation, knowing that I, I don't believe this is a long-term solution, my recommendation would be that they hold on to that, because that, that may be seat money that's needed when, when we optimistically return to having a program, so that the, the board at that point doesn't have to start over, kind of thing.
Can they do that legally? Do they, I mean, I'm assuming it's some kind of five oh one C three, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They, they would have to report their, their income, but I don't know that they, as long as they don't dissolve as a board, I don't know why they couldn't. I mean, that's something they would have to look into.
I mean, that's on them.
Yeah.
The point is, it's a separate organization, we have no control over it, correct? In terms of decision or finances or anything, so they would have to decide.
But if they asked me my opinion, I would say, look into whether or not you can continue as a, because that would be beneficial to, I think, for the future. Sure, that we can bring it back, get a role back.
If we did work on a program back, would we ever look at just doing it as a school team versus a separate board and club? Is that something, a decision we'd have to make?
I'm, I'm not sure how they, well, it started out as a club, which is why they had a board to begin with. So that may be something that is part of the conversation. We don't have, to my, we don't have any other, to my knowledge, groups that have a, that have a separate board.
That's, that, that's kind of where I'm going, right? We've, we've run into issues with lack of oversight.
We do have, I mean, we have.
We hired the coaches and we paid the coaches.
Yep, yep.
And we would fund it.
We paid transportation, we pay for a bit of ice time, but the board, they, they raise funds and they're responsible for the other costs associated with it. Because what, I think you heard Coach Mulby say, I mean, he's appreciative of what the district contributes to it, and it's more than what it used to. It still doesn't, you know, cover all their costs.
It comes down to the, if it were a true school sport, we would have to fully fund it?
Yes, and, or with, help from the boosters, which I suspect they probably help in some regards, but maybe they don't have to.
Do we fully fund lacrosse now?
Uh, that's my knowledge.
We backed them, we backed them.
I think ice hockey is just a different.
Yep, I'm against it.
We don't.
With this entering into this with Grand Rapids Christian, will we, it'd be fully on their ice?
Yes. And I'll say the other part to it as well.
That's gotta hurt the.
That is, that is.
Walker's business.
It's gonna, yeah, in terms of revenue for that, yeah.
I mean, at, at the end of the day, it's either do this, or they don't have a team at all. Am I right? Like, they're not able to.
Our kids don't have a chance to play.
Uh, yeah.
That kid won't be able to.
We just, we'll, we'll just really struggle to feel the, it, it comes down to safety too, because when you're talking about hockey, you have run so many lines.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's like.
Yeah, I don't wanna have to revisit all of that.
I don't want us to guess that we can't play, because I don't know.
They wouldn't like cancel the season, it would just put it.
I don't know, Ross, where, where would we be if we, I mean, I.
I think that's what we just kept continuing, gets the pressure from even being on board, where like, ten to twelve kids, this isn't enough. And, you know, some would say the writing's been on the wall there. I, you know, with that Mulby perspective of it, he'd optimistically, let's get a few more kids, let's get some more kids out, let's try, you know, but then, you know, you get a couple of kids that haven't played in a while, and they can barely skate. That's just not, you know, that's not appealing to those that are competitive and why, you know, be on a competitive hockey team. So this late game doesn't, wasn't ideal, but I think just because of the, you know, the efforts by Coach Mulby to really try to feel like we can get a few more, or add, you know, GRS, I mean, he called himself, I mean, he's gonna go, he'd go stop in and try to talk to somebody, because he knew of like three kids that he thinks would probably plan a team if we could co-op with them. You don't get any response from them, it's not, it isn't gonna happen. So we're running out of time, but, but kind of we're, just those options, we're exhausted, to try to add some more, just to feel a bit better about competing, you know, at a level that we want to, and, and that's where we're, we're most competitive currently. What's gonna happen, right, in their mind, so.
As part of this co-op, will Coach Mulby still be involved?
We don't know that yet. I mean, he's, he gave his idea here too, you know, his kid still plays, may play, you know, on that team.
Is it up to Grand Rapids Christian?
It's kind of, it's kind of the board part two. I mean, they might wanna be a part, some of the board members on our end might wanna be a part of that for the time being, right? In terms of the help and support, you know, with their Christian program with our involvement. So we, I'm sure he'll be over to it, but, you know, another next question too is, is some of the funds we had up, is it copy? Even if the goal is to bring hockey back in a couple of years, because he does see projection of youth coming through that market. How do we support him and still doing that, you know, still, you know, still helping the program in the time being to try to bring it back?
Well, and I guess that, you hit on a couple of my questions there, right? We had set up, because we pay ice time, with them now going to Grand Rapids Christian, are we as a district still kicking money into their program?
So what they, so what, we don't do this with any other group at this point, but it, it kind of opens up, opens up the opportunity to have conversations with other co-ops, especially those that are kind of cost prohibitive, is, I believe, they're asking for us to contribute five hundred dollars per player. I think the understanding that would.
That would be initial conversation, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Does that include, because I know parents pay money too. Is this entirely separate from what the parents would pay?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be separate, so.
Is that aligned with where we, where we, I don't remember the numbers we talked about the other night?
What do you mean, the numbers?
Budget wise.
The budget?
Yeah, what we budgeted.
Oh, no, we, we would, we would, we have more budgeted than what, than the five hundred dollars per student. So some of the conversation that we had was, you know, in terms of, the other part of it is, you might recall that some of the students don't make the team, right? Regardless, whether it's our hosting it, or somebody else hosting it, not all students make the team. And then, like, you remember Coach Mulby said that those that don't make the team could be part of the Hawks program and skate out of Walker. So the question would become, that's kind of like a, a JV, if you think of it as a JV, a JV kind of a thing. So maybe that's our, you know, how do, how do, how do we approach some of that kind of stuff? Like, and he, I don't know if he would, coach part of that, there's a lot of conversation that we'd have to have separate from, that I'm asking the board to do tonight, and that is help us move forward.
That's a, that's an interesting question, but it's an awkward one too, right? Because if we started funding kids to play in a program like that, I could see parents saying, why don't you pay for Michael to go play in the baseball program? And why don't you, you know, Western, pay for Western Little League, because you don't have, it's just, it, it could open.
Yeah.
A Pandora's box, right? I'm not saying it's wrong, but we would have to figure that. The other thing is, we talked about all these things that Coach Mulby was gonna do to help try to build the program. Are, is that stuff still happening?
That was the next question pointed for this, that we move forward with this, because we're waiting after the committee to finalize it all, so.
Okay.
How can we, how can we still be involved? He works there at Walker, he's been to the great spot, opportunity to continue to help get the program back, right? What does that look like? I don't, you know, those would be the next, total conversation of his involvement. And he wouldn't necessarily be a paid coach though, unless we do work that out with Grand Rapids Christian, you know. It's not to say we couldn't say, who's supposed to be a paid coach, he can help coach at Grand Rapids Christian, and still be involved with our youth and, you know, try to get more.
So all those details, those things to be worked out.
I mean, it sounds like we're largely supportive and we'll go to vote of the co-op, still having the opportunity. I think it'd be good to settle that, move that forward, and then understand kind of what the go-forward is, getting back to a program and some of those development opportunities that Coach Mulby referenced. Um, I think, my opinion only would be, is it'd be really neat to see an RCA team, I think, for a few reasons. Obviously, it's our conference, it might be a way of bringing the schools together from a fan base too, because I know my kids love to go to hockey games. They don't know anything about hockey, they've never played hockey, really ever skated, but those hockey games are a really fun community environment. And so I think if we could have, you know, an RCA program, that would be neat, and we could probably find a way to separate out, where we play some games at Walker Ice, some games at wherever else in the district, so that would be, I think, a practical outcome. Because I think the probability to get to a Kennebec only team is more than a few years down the road, would be my guess. Worth of thought. So I, again, I think it would be great to know once you get past this big hurdle, is, what's the, Coach Mulby can maybe come back and share maybe a three to five year layout of what he sees, so.
Good. Anything else on the superintendent report?
Thank you.
All right.
Gary, I have one question, really quick, the ice hockey co-op agreement, for the MHSAA agents, is that, should that be a standalone vote? Or is it okay to be in the consent?
It can be in the consent, yeah. Unless somebody requests to have it removed.
No, I just wondered for MHSAA, if it had to be a standalone vote.
There are some.
That do.
Truth be told, there are some boards that don't even vote on this. They have, the board members sign off, but they don't actually discuss it as a board. So I appreciate the conversation.
Move into public comment, none, so we'll move forward to action items. Seeking motion and support to approve the consent agenda, including September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes, September twenty twenty-five check register, and the ice hockey co-op agreement that we just discussed.
Motion.
Support.
Motion and support, for support, all pagers say aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Motion carries five, five, thank you. So now I don't know that we had appointed, unless I missed it, the temporary secretary, did we do that?
Yep.
Stepped out, and who was that?
Cortez.
Cortez, thank you. So we're gonna do a roll call vote to go into closed session under MCL one five, two six eight, I don't know, eight K for review of site vulnerability assessment results, and dianial emergency operations plan review, roll call vote. Oh, sorry, good point, I'm a little rusty.
Motion.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Motion support, any discussion. Hearing none?
Cortez, aye, Mr. Us.
Aye.
All right, aye. Roberson?
Aye.
Enter.
Aye.
You will adjourn to close, motion passes five zero, we'll adjourn to closed session at eight oh seven. Thanks, everybody. When we go, when we come out of closed session, for those that stick around, we'll finish our rest of the meeting, which is future.